Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July ninth of two thousand and twenty-four, and we hope everyone had a happy and safe Fourth of July holiday. It was a lot of activities around. We hope that everything went well for everybody, so family and friends and whatnot. So with me today, I have Don Schwenker, Nyn Flago, myself, Mike Steinis are your county supervisors. Lisa Smith, our county auditor, Bjorn is our IT director, Luann is our administrative assistant is here, and Mary from the newspaper is here, and first on our agenda is Mr. Todd Keeney. We have Mr. Keeney and Mr. Shackle also here, the assistant engineer. Todd's been up early and working. He's got his work clothes on and he's ready to rock a little.
I sleep this.
That's pajamas. All right. Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
First thing is funding agreement. So last November, or yeah, last fall, we applied for H SIP, Highway Safety Improvement Program money for our Z thirty-four overlay project for fiscal year twenty-five, so next summer's project.
At North Preston, is that where we're at?
From Preston to the Damon River Bridge.
Okay.
We applied for it, and we were notified a couple of months ago that we were awarded four hundred thousand dollars for the safety improvements that we requested.
So when you say safety improvements, is that, is that part of the resurface or just the rumble strips and just the?
It'll be part of the re, it'll include paved shoulders or two-foot paved shoulders on both sides. Shoulder rumbles on both sides, centerline rumbles, grooved pavement markings, so they actually like groove in or make a small depress or milling. To make your pavement markings last longer. There'll be six-inch wide markings, base widening, so since we're be having wide shoulders, we need some pavement structure underneath the wide shoulder. So the base widening, which one is included in that? What else?
V RAM?
Yeah, V RAM on the centerline joint, void-reducing asphalt membrane. You bring up more.
With that, yeah, so like, one of the things I was trying to get the DOT to allow for H SIP funds to pay for is a lot of, when this first H SIP program came out, not many people were doing the centerline rubbles because when you do single lane paving, double lane paving, it's very hard to get good compaction and density along the centerline. So you see a lot of centerline deterioration, you know, you'd probably see it when you're driving. So a lot, the last thing a lot of county engineers wanted to do was start milling little depressions to hold water at your centerline because advanced or accelerated deterioration. So the V RAM, it's a, it's a, it's like, I would call it like a heavy tack, but it's, it's a heavy, heavily like polymerized, so when you spray it down, it's usually about eighteen inches to two-foot wide. And then when the hot mix hits, hits it, that hot material, that tack or that, that liquid asphalt, the polymers start working up into the mix, fills the void, so you really get a very low-void centerline joint instead of having deterioration. So that allowed like more county engineers to start saying, yeah, we'll do centerline rumbles because now we're not so worried about deterioration in the centerline joint. So that's what it is. So really, this, the H SIP program pays for everything for you to put the safety improvements out there. Typically, there's systemic type improvements, like a shorter or a narrow wide shoulder, a wider pavement marking, like in the white aselines, and then centerline and aseline rumbles. That's the, those are the, I would say, the mainstay of what the H SIP program is trying to do, is put those safety improvements out there.
No, I think they'd be worth, very worthwhile. I mean, as far as what they do and, and what their purpose is and what they do, yeah. Especially if you got runners, walkers, bikers, you know, help somewhat and.
Or distracted drivers.
Well, yeah, the rumble strips are, yeah, they're almost an necessity nowadays. I just, yeah.
And we have the same sort of scenario, or when Clint County did a project two years ago, I came up into Jackson County on Z forty from the county line up to city of miles, so be almost exactly the same.
Yeah.
Because it was cold in place.
Nice. That's a, that's a nice get, huh? Any documents, all the grant money that we've received that you apply for, or that you do receive and don't receive?
It's on my to-do list.
I would like to, I would like to see it back, man.
I'll make a motion to approve this funding acceptance.
Yeah, motion to second to, uh, there's a resolution number, is that correct?
No, not for this one.
No? Okay. So that's right, it's the middle of the traffic safety fund application? Uh, no, discuss? Uh, I'm on a funding agreement with Z thirty-four resurfacing HSIP funds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Does that need board signature?
It needs chair signature.
Yeah, yeah.
Chair does not.
Include the signature on the years. Vote? Vote okay.
Uh, next is the resolution to authorize the submittal of a traffic safety fund application. So last, this is the same grant that we applied for last year for the destination line, the T SIP program. We're now applying this year for this August for temporary traffic control signals. So you may remember last summer on Highway sixty-four, the DOT had the, when they were doing the bridge rehab projects, they had those temporary traffic control stop lanes. That's what this is, we're applying to, a joint effort with Cedar and Jones County, applying to purchase those to use for our joint efforts, like especially for our patching as it relates to Jackson County. We can extend our work zone and do more patching in a day versus one small patch because we're limited right now with the type of setup we have. This would allow us to do much more.
And it eliminates the need for having guys on the ground with, with panels. So there's really two less guys that you need to have out there because you don't need flaggers. And to be honest, people respond better to a traffic light than they do a flagger, so.
The light don't talk back, or I mean, you don't get all the guff that's related with?
Yeah, people are just used to seeing traffic, yes, I don't know.
So you're the safety, you're two, you got two guys, I mean, standing on the.
Exactly, so it moves guys out of the hard way too.
So there is a resolution number for that?
It is, ten fifty-five dash zero seven dash zero nine dash twenty-two-four. Second thought.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution number ten fifty-five dash zero seven dash zero nine dash twenty-two-four as presented, presented for the submittal of the traffic safety fund application. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
That is not the action. That is not what you would be saying.
Okay.
We pretty enough.
Do you have?
Yeah, you know, we, you pretty enough. They're not quite.
Okay, updates?
Uh, Y sixty-one overlay, it's at a standstill right now. They have, we have two course, four courses in total. We have the leveling and interlayer. We're the first two, those are done on both lanes. We're just waiting for base and surface. Uh, they are down in Clint County working currently this.
So there's two more lifts on it?
Yes.
I drove it this morning, and I mean, they've got gravel on the, on the shoulder edge, but it's up quite a ways. There's not any up than further than the last one, right?
Well, they, they added shoulder stones. They can't have more than a two-inch drop-off, so when they open it up to traffic, so they do have shoulder stones.
It's gonna be higher than what was there before.
No, but I mean, not the project that we overlaid last year, same, same type of deal, from Hookah built a little bit.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Nice, very nice.
Hopefully next week they're back, but.
Whether Monday. Was that maybe Monday?
Maybe, yeah, depending on weather, of course, but.
Yeah, I don't know if I run into them this morning, and I know you said they went down to Clint for a bit. I actually see them moving one day, but. Nice, so it's a nice project.
We don't have any update yet as far as the one eighty-fourth Avenue Bridge, when that's gonna start, but I would anticipate end of July, early August is the rough timeframe I'm expecting.
Sounds good?
Yes, yeah, I'll be, I will not be here Thursday. Uh, there's the Iowa County Engineers Midyear Conference in Ames on Thursday for just one day, so you'll probably be there as well, won't you?
I'll be back?
Yeah.
I have to go to me. I'll be there two days.
Okay, uh, any other, I assume that the, um, road projects are still going on, the crowning and.
Retrieval work.
Retrieval?
They didn't go yesterday because of all the adequate, more than adequate moisture.
In fact, that's.
So, but I do believe they're, uh, starting today for a week, but they did not go yesterday, and it's been slow going this year just because of the excessive amounts of rain we've been having.
Yeah.
But when we're, but we're going when we can go, and when we are going, we are getting proper compaction because we have mo, we have adequate moisture, so.
Yeah, well, it's a good deal.
As you look for, uh, you know, we took bids and we did the kind of clearing the right-of-way projects. As you look to do that in the future, uh, I drove from Bellevue down to Springbrook on that hard-surface road, and there's five dead deer along that road, and the vegetation is right up onto the road, so I would like to see if that could be considered in the future.
As a tree first plan?
Yeah, because it, you know, there's a short stretch of road and, uh, it was, it stung the whole way because it was just dead animals. So, uh, that's where I'll think through there, so.
Um, I did just deliver, uh, the rest of the chemical we just bought, uh, for Jeannie to do the spraying. Hmm. So she's been trying to incrementally do some of that, so, uh, we just bought a bunch of, uh, gosh, Vaseline, crap oil, whatever, crap oil, I call it, but it's, it's got a different more technical term. And then Escort and Whitestone is the chem, the slurry that we're gonna mix, we're gonna be using, so. And offered like, uh, if she needs an extra person to help, we could task somebody over there, as long as she has the license, the category six. And she could have somebody helping her spray, but you gotta have somebody licensed on site, you know, supervising. So just doesn't have to be current because I know she's, there's a lot of area that's gotta be sprayed, so.
Did we spray where we clean, where it already?
No, we're trying to get that sprayed now. Yeah, so that's what, we're spraying it full of your application, so it's not, it's not spray, we're spraying for leave, we're spraying full of your application, so.
No, there's a lot of, there's a lot of mowing, and we'd like to thank our property owners that, that do that and keep the minimum of the overgrowth to a minimum. Um, we, we know that the actually insurance companies have been talking about it and, and things like that, so. No, it's certainly appreciated that they maintain it and try to help us out, so there's a lot of it going on right now. Thanks, gentlemen. Okay, are there any visitors or citizens? I don't see any present. I don't see any online that would like to approach the board this morning? Seeing or hearing none? Um, Lisa?
This morning, I just sent a motion to approve the minutes of the July second, two thousand and twenty-four board proceeding as written by Deputy Auditor Boy and authorized publication in the official newspapers. So moved.
Very good.
Motion to second to approve the minutes from the July second meeting and, and authorized print. As presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Well, I have to the board today.
Well, thank you. Luann?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's see if my voice holds out. All right, um, today at noon, Mike has a special A-CAP meeting by Zoom. Um, he just let us know about that yesterday.
He gave me a lot of warning, I know.
Oh, did he? Yeah, exactly. Wednesday, July tenth at nine AM, it'll be, um, Nyn's turn on Just Talk. At four PM tomorrow is the Veterans Affairs Committee Commission meeting downstairs for any of you that choose to attend that. And at six PM tonight is the nine-one-one Service Board meeting here in the Supervisor's Office or by Zoom from my candidate. Thursday, July eleventh at eleven AM, at the Mississippi Valley Workforce Business Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. And at noon is the Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting, and they're either go over to Innovate One Twenty to their offices or by Zoom for that, for any of you that want to go to that. Monday, July fifteenth at three PM is a, um, Governing Board meeting, um, in Deppport or by Zoom for Nyn. At six PM Monday night is the Together We Build Board meeting for Don. And at seven PM is the Together We Build Steering Committee meeting, um, for Nyn. I think both of those are at the Together We Built, um, building. Seven o'clock Monday night, tentatively, we have a zoning commission meeting in a meeting room downstairs for any of you that want to attend that. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July sixteenth at nine AM. Six PM that night will be a, um, Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting, um, for Don, and that'll be a hybrid meeting. Meaning it'll be at their offices and by Zoom. And at seven o'clock that night is a Board of Health meeting for Nyn. Under my portion for business today, I'm looking for motion to reappoint Jim England to, as the Rural Representative to the Macoka Library Board for five years, starting on July first of two thousand and twenty-nine.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to second to reappoint Jim England to the Macoka Rural Library, or the Library Rural Representative um, for expiration, expiration on seven, one of twenty-nine. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
And we need to talk about, um, the request for resolution for the Courts of Eastern Iowa Authority.
So as most of you have seen in the last week here or so, there's been a lot of conversation between Clinton and Muscatine and um, different, all the counties involved. Uh, we've talked to Shandra several times. We've talked to our county attorney several times. Um, I don't know that Jackson County will be heavily involved, other than the fact we have a lot of frontage of the Mississippi River. So I know there's a lot of inland, um, stuff that also accompanies that port designation. I know Clinton is working pretty hard at it. Um, I think we've always been good neighbors. And I don't know that there's any financial burden to us that I can see. Nobody has come up with any, um, as far as that I've asked about that we're responsible for. So I don't know what everybody would like to do. Do we have a resolution of that sort?
No, this is just a current updated blank fill-in.
Do I have one?
Prepared?
Ready though.
Okay.
Yeah, except for Jackson County, so.
I mean, and they're, and they're wanting, I, I mean, again, I went through the, all the emails, and we started this back in February or March, when we started asking questions about it, so. So I, I think it's a positive. I don't see any red flags that would indicate not.
The only hesitations I've heard is, you know, when they talk about, where do they meet? You know, we have to appoint somebody who's gonna do the administration, you know, that kind of stuff, but again, is where we really don't have any designated ports, you know.
Good.
I don't know how much that'll affect Jackson County as far as housing or whatever, but, um, when you look at Clinton County, you know, and you go on down the line from there, you're assuming somewhere down in the Muscat, Muscatine, of those counties, they'll probably do more of it, so. As long, you know, as long as there's no financial commitment without due process, I have no problem with it.
And, and again, I've asked several times for that. Yeah, did John ever, um, say that he'd be available this morning for anything or for, for a counterstation or?
He never answered me on that.
Would somebody like to explain what it does get you?
Basically, what this does, um, I sat through a meeting up there and it's a, it gives, Iowa is the only state along the Mississippi that doesn't have any port authority designation. And it just helps different things qualify for grants. I think there was one, uh, doctor at the, the talk I was there. Her husband did something, but she got a bunch of grants for wetlands and things on the Illinois side. Um, they talk about how it could help. It's, it's just another check the box when you're applying for a grant. Does the Port Authority approve this, your project? And they said it would be good for like the Mississippi River Museum up in Dubuque and might open them up or make their applications for grant funding a little stronger. Uh, some of the things on down the river, to even some of the wetland projects that the DNR and stuff are doing. It would just be another voice of support.
Is it a coordination between all of the counties working?
It is, right.
Yeah, you have to have, everybody in Iowa is on.
You have to have like three adjoining counties.
Three of the same, basically, all the other states, the state declares it and it's done. Iowa, the counties have to declare it, then the state automatically recognizes it if so many counties declare it. So we're backwards compared to everybody else. So right now, they're trying to get the counties to pass the resolutions, so then they'll automatically get the state designation. It's just.
And there used to be a port thing, but the state changed its regulations, and then we didn't qualify to maintain.
Yeah.
When you say we, you mean Jackson County or?
Iowa.
Iowa.
Iowa, so.
Edge.
I think in the long run, doesn't it help, like maybe with some type of flood mitigation too with the backwaters?
Some of the backwater projects and stuff, so.
Thank you. Well, somewhere too, I heard that it might help with, uh, like lands along there for projects for cities like Subuoka or something too.
I, I just.
You define the.
You'll never get any Fed money if you don't go along with some of the rules and regulations that.
Appreciate it.
Wishes of the board?
Does your resolution have anything in there about not supplying funding?
I, I think what Shelley did is took what you have in your hand and just made it conform to whatever.
As soon as we're cutting.
I mean, we, we've been, is this, yeah, this is the same one that went pretty much.
This is what Jim Wolf sent.
This is what Wolf sent, yeah. And he's a county attorney from Clinton, correct?
Yes.
So he's been working very diligently with Muscatine, and they've been going back and forth, uh, for emails and legal documents, so.
So is your resolution just with those two counties? Those other, so that makes three?
It, it's for the port.
The whole, the whole thing is the same. Well, it's for the whole six counties.
The ports of Eastern Iowa.
Six.
Pleasant County approved it yesterday, correct?
Correct. And who was going to approve it next Monday? Was it in an email this morning or late last night, I see?
They didn't pull it up, but.
But we've discussed, uh, financial obligation before, and there is none to us.
Oh.
And this doesn't really say anything about that.
Only reference, I saw that it made anything financial, it said somehow there is it being a surplus of funds that it gets split between the six counties even, but I didn't see any reference to us having to supply any money.
That would be my, like, matching rate fund.
But I think according to what they were saying is, let's say, Subuoka has a project or said city has a project and they're applying for it, they would have to supply the match funds or whatever. You know.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. That's what they said, but I would almost, again, like a.
Nothing expressed or implied in this resolution shall represent any financial commitment to the Port Authority on behalf of the other side. That's section, bullet number three, last sentence. Of all powers contemplated under chapters twenty-eight J of the Iowa Code, except eminent domain or zone.
And John has expressed that to us before.
Yeah. Wonder if there's a way we can approve this for us, that, you know, is this in perpetuity forever and ever, or can we say, we'll, we'll, we'll do it for a two-year term?
I don't know. I would, I mean, you're, you're, you're establishing a court authority.
We should be able to, if we, we should also be able to rescind it if we don't like where it's going, things. I make a motion to approve.
But this is, if you approve it, then this is resolution number ten fifty-six dash zero seven dash zero nine dash twenty-two-four.
I'll second that.
Have a motion to second to approve resolution ten fifty-six dash zero seven dash zero nine dash twenty-two-four as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
No lie, that's for you.
Thank you. Take a short recess at this time? Okay, we will reconvene at this time, and we're joined by Arlene Sharp, our Jackson County Recorder. Good morning.
Sharp.
Sharp, yeah, that's what I said, you know?
Don't take it personally. He doesn't know anybody.
Say what?
We were just talking about the.
Howard? Larry Howard has said what?
Okay, so fiscal year-end report is why I'm, one of the reasons I'm here, and this sheet right here with the, the little bit of red on it, it is just an accumulation of each year and how my fees or our fees fluctuate from year to year, economy, renewal, interest rates, that all, that all is why our fees fluctuate from year to year, okay? And then the actual fiscal year-end report. Um, there's some highlighted in yellow areas. So the first page, the county total is one fifty-three, three ninety-two, sixty, which is a couple thousand less than last year, but of course you're looking at economy, and no one's refinancing, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we again did bring in for auditor transfer fees, which goes into the county fund, the seven thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, which is up almost a thousand, so. Um, and then passports were up as far as DNR and vitals. The writing fees on ATV snows and boats have increased because July of twenty-three, we went from a dollar twenty-five to two dollars that the county gets to keep.
So it was five.
Pardon?
No.
Oh, so anyway, that's that. And then on the second page, of course, is the state total of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and two cents, which gets, goes to the state, so the total fiscal, fiscal year income was four hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. It's pretty cut and dry. It's the same thing every year, just is fluctuating a little bit, so.
Yeah, nice to see them and see what's happening. Yeah, I can certainly understand the refinancing part of it, um. Um, I would certainly understand that the TV registration is up also. Seems to be, seems to be a fair amount of them around.
A lot, they're registering a lot of them.
So I guess, and that helps everybody a little bit, uh, as far as even, um, the economy, so. Hopefully that all works out for us. I have not heard too many negatives on it, so any other, I guess, as far as the board goes, we'd like to thank you and your staff for what you're doing and that, uh, hope everything is in line. If you have any issues, let us know, yes?
Everything's in line, as it should be. So Lisa has the original, wants you to prove it for signatures, and then.
Everything's in line, as it should be, so Lisa has the original, wants you to approve it for signatures and.
So I need a motion to have that placed on file and authorized the chair and auditor signatures, on the county recorder's report of fees collected from July first twenty twenty three through June thirty twenty twenty four, in the amount of four hundred and ninety one thousand nine hundred and sixty nine dollars and sixty two cents. So hope.
Very good.
Motion to second to approve the recorder's fiscal year end report as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and then also just real quick, after July eighth, you guys are gonna be receiving Iowa Land Records annual report, it will be sent to you from Iowa Land Records.
Actually, I think we got an email on that.
Did you already?
Yeah.
Okay, um, if you have any questions, just let me know, I'll be glad to explain stuff, but I'm not gonna go into that.
I did not open it, but it looked interesting.
Okay, and then, just a quick FYI, um, the reporters this year are trying to do a modernization project, policy, um, and it's not just raising fees, our fees have not changed as far as recording fees since nineteen eighty five. So we are initializing more of a, we're calling it a modernization product, project where yes, fees will be raised. Um, but we're also, uh, taking away some, some things that have been required that will no longer be required. Um, we're trying to make the fees easier for the constituents to understand and figure when documents are coming from attorneys or banks and that sort of thing, so. Um, if you have any questions on that project, I've got literature in the office for you, okay? Last thing, US imaging is here unless Lisa already mentioned it, US imaging is here today to re-scan, some pages out of books, so just FYI, they're getting close to the, the end of that, so they're back re-scanning.
Hopefully that's going well, it has, I haven't heard anything lately, so yeah, hopefully that's working well and everything gets completed there is.
Yeah, they've sent us examples.
Was there deadlines?
No, well, they just told us like when they might be done, so it will be wet this year, so they're getting close.
And as far as your office and the permitting, the new, uh, jail permitting thing, does that affect you or how's that going for your office or?
Jail permitting.
Geo.
Geo, no. I haven't heard anything about Geo, so.
A lot of your fees and stuff, they couldn't apply online, ATV, they all gotta bring stuff in, all has to be face to face?
Pretty much, but we do a lot through the mail if the customer calls in. Um, and as long as they have what they needed, we can email them the application, they can fill it out and they can mail it to us, yeah. It's a simple emailing or the application is on the website.
Your office is well aware that we, we contracted to have this, done online, so we, a lot of this can be done through our, um, website.
All I know it's being done, I haven't been included in any of that.
I ain't got a know.
Yeah, so who is?
I would talk, um, Elizabeth, uh, Lori Rowling's doing it, the secondary roads are doing it. I think the assessor's doing some stuff. So you might be able to, they might be able to go in and fill out their information, online, and then you could mail them and do whatever, they might even be able to submit payment, you know? That would be something you could definitely check into to see if some of those things are.
The issue with that though is we have certain regulations, like the DNR, it's not just an application, we have to have the paper we're approving, whether it be an MSO, a bill of sale, a title, a registration.
And we're not disputing any of that, just maybe check it out.
We have to have a notarized signature, copy of the driver's license. But I will definitely ask and see what, because all that stuff is online as much as we can. Um, vital records are certain, applications like marriage application, they will not let that be an online application. But yeah, we'll check into that too.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay. Well, we're done.
Luann, you said John wanted to come in today?
He was here yesterday and he said he would be in today. I didn't have him on, on the agenda, but he was gonna be around, he said.
So do we need to take a recess?
Is Andrew coming in or was he just left on the schedule?
I think he's just left on the agenda weekly in case he has a report. Correct?
He has to be on every week, so that's where he's left.
I know that John wants to talk to you about, pushing back the open house for the law enforcement.
Hold up.
September? No. That's for him to come in and to talk to you about, to see what your opinion is. I use the word possible.
We certainly can discuss. Let's take a short recess at this time. Good morning again, and we will reconvene at this time and we are joined by Andrew Long, our Jackson County Jail Administrator, good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, um.
Looking for an update, I guess, if you have anything for us?
Yeah, so, uh, we've been working on moving things kind of from the shed into the drawers and the, rooms that had like cabinets, doing the booking room, uh, the control room. Organizing stuff a little bit that way, just kind of getting it where it needs to go, so we make sure we have a good idea of what we still need, what we don't. Um, in our current jail, numbers are down to sixteen currently, so we're getting lower than we were a couple of weeks ago at least, um. So eight in, eight shipped out at the moment. Um, the cancer biopsy I talked about, we got the bill on that. Wasn't as bad as I thought it would be, it was like five twenty nine, um, I called negotiated it down to three fifty. So definitely not as bad as I, uh, thought it was going to be there. Um, other than that, we've been doing a lot of work trying to get everything kind of organized on what we're calling each cell. Um, getting a list of all that done for our, uh, our computer stuff and otherwise not too eventful of a week thankfully for, uh, fourth of July weekend, not a ton of rats, so. Somehow we got lucky to influence.
Uh, did you get some furniture moved in last week, is that correct?
Um, I, I don't think we got furniture moved in, excuse me, um. I don't think any furniture moved in, but other than was already in that EOC. Um, we have furniture taken apart and ready to be moved, I think tomorrow we're gonna start moving that, so. Um, we, we have some coming from Bellevue and then we're gonna go ahead and go through the piece by player, see if there's anything else that we need there. Um, so hopefully by, I would hope by the end of tomorrow, we should have that, pretty well decided what we need and don't need, so.
Okay, well, yeah, as long as we can move that stuff around or move it out, we either gonna disperse or use it.
Yep. Yep, I was both places, Bellevue and Peace by Players here, uh, last week, I think we have pretty well tagged what we need, what's going where. Um, it'll just be a matter of, you know, once we start moving stuff in, okay, I guess we need something here, we don't need something there. So I think hopefully by the end of tomorrow, we should have a pretty good idea of where we're going.
Okay. Any questions for Andrew? Well, we appreciate the update, like I said, we'll keep us updated, I don't know, um, they were.
Do you still want to be on the schedule weekly?
Probably should, just until we get through the, into the new jail, just in case something.
I guess that's probably okay, if, if you don't intend to be here or you don't have anything for us, just let Luann know and then we know that, we're not, we're not waiting or wait, having somebody else wait, I know Mary's busy, so she's got.
Sure.
Gotta move on.
Yeah.
In discussions with our auditor, we're gonna talk about procurement policies and, and credit limits and, and things like that, so we don't run into some, issues.
Oh, sure.
So.
Yep.
Before work.
Sounds good, I appreciate it. All right, well, thank you very much.
Yep. Are we still scheduled for the open house? Have you talked, guys talked to John or what's going on?
I know that the last I'd heard Brent was still looking at was the ninth or tenth, but I don't think he's cemented anything down there yet. Hopefully, in the near future.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask him though.
All right. Thank you. Anything else before the board, any reports or anything else that somebody wants to discuss?
No, I met with Farm Bureau, they have their annual, uh, banquet Sunday night, I went and, and, uh, I go and I've met with some people, but then they had their annual board meeting and they asked me to talk and, what was going on with the county, I just kind of gave them the last update with the jails, you know, we're looking at an open house. Hopefully be functional by the end of August, maybe September, so. Um, but that was a very well attended event, so.
Anything else?
Motion adjourned.
Have a motion to second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried, needing adjourned, thank you.